Hi, Dan.
Hello, how are you?
Oh, great. Hey, Matt. Hi, John.
How are you doing, Tracy?
I'm doing well. Are you here to give public comment today or just watching?
I'm here for the committee.
Oh, that's right. Committee's presenting tonight.
Yep.
Hi, Nicole.
John's presenting. I'm just kidding. John's not presenting.
Looking forward to that tonight. Hi, Vic. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Thanks.
How've you been?
Great. Moving forward, a house remodel project. It's long and ongoing, but I love progress.
Good for you.
Hi, everybody.
Hey. Louisa, you look beautiful.
What?
Yeah, I love that scar.
Thank you.
I haven't seen you in so long.
Well, it's been that long. That's true. Since the market, actually.
Yeah.
Kind of crazy. Yeah. I don't know. Maybe we can all go have a drink one day.
Ginger ale.
Whatever you want to drink. I'm gonna have a bottle. Oh, goodness. What are you remodeling?
Living room, TV room area, the whole main open area of the house. It's the last part.
You're a contractor, aren't you?
Yes, and we are. I always tease, we're like the proverbial plumber with the leaky pipes. We're the one, we're the last to get the attention.
Yeah, man. Off the record there, Dan, do I need a permit to demo a bar? Off the record, Dan.
Why would you want to do that? It's a bar.
I don't need a bar.
The contents of the bar or the actual bar itself?
The actual bar. I have contents elsewhere.
We can help with the latter, not the former.
Well, what if I included the latter with the former? We can have a party six feet apart. Wow, one minute.
Hey, Fire Chief, we're sorry we didn't have one of those recliners for you for the meeting, but...
He has his own.
There you go. Perfect.
I brought my own.
Don't leave home without it. In fact, don't leave home, period, right?
Yeah.
Excuse me. Hey, Rochelle. Hey, Nicole.
Good evening.
Hello.
Susan.
Hi, everybody.
Matt Mahoney, you know what? Not to forget, right?
Where is he? Oh, there he is.
Right here. The Space Force?
Yeah, there you go. Right. Perfect.
My video, somebody reached out to me and goes, "You forgot the Space Force." And I went, I had to go look it up. And I'm like, oh, yeah, it's legit.
Yeah. Yeah, I was suggesting for the first occupant of a spaceship that's not returning.
You only have one occupant that you'd like to recommend?
Kind of one at the moment.
Come on, man. I have several.
Yeah, no question.
Okay. I'm gonna turn my video on.
Where's that? Oh, there he is.
There we go. We have a six. I'm not getting the sidebar on my display tonight, so I can't see it. Okay. Yeah. Okay, I'd like to call the November 12, 2020 Regular Des Moines City Council Meeting to order. And will Councilmember Nutting please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we move into roll call, I'd like to make a note that yesterday was Veterans Day, and I just wanted to acknowledge all of our veterans and thank them for their service and also let them know that we will absolutely never forget all they have done for us. And being that we have a veteran on our council, I'd like to hand the mic over to Deputy Mayor Mahoney at this time to see if he has any thoughts that he would like to add.
Thank you, Mayor. Really quick, I'd just like to, as from Des Moines' perspective, we have several veterans that's served as far as World War II on up to current days times. And no matter what the force, from wholeheartedly from our council, we thank you for your service. Both in whether you were in the Army, Marines, Navy, Air Force, Coast Guard, or Space Force, we sincerely thank you.
At this point, I'd like to pass the microphone to our City Manager, Matthias.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just to follow on that, appreciate your comments, Deputy Mayor. We were able to find space to array our service flags in the back of my office here. And of course, the one I think that is the most touching of all of these is the Missing in Action POW Black Flag. And we never want to go a year without acknowledging the people that have given us their ultimate sacrifice. Thank you.
And they are definitely included in the comment that we will never forget. Okay, with that, I'm going to take us forward to roll call. Councilmember Martin Elliott is absent this evening. He has a family illness that he is caring for. So I move to excuse Councilmember Martin Elliott. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion was made by myself, seconded by Councilmember Banks. All those in favor, please raise your hand until I call your name. Okay, I see Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Banks, Deputy Mayor Mahoney, Councilmember Nutting, and Councilmember Buxton. Thank you. Pass is six zero. We are at the, our correspondence for the evening.
Mayor, we have no correspondence, written public comment, and no one has signed to speak tonight.
Thank you. Okay, so that takes us forward to our administration report. And we'll start off with our City Manager, Mr. Matthias.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a number of distinguished guests and our Fire Chief. At any rate, the first thing we'd like to do is have a report from our Human Services Advisory Committee. This was a committee that was formed by council ordinance in 1994 and has worked diligently over the years to review applications for social, mostly social type programming. They've, they work very hard in reviewing those applications carefully, making recommendations. And they're also involved in holding those organizations accountable based on periodic reports that they're required to present to the city. And I'd like to just acknowledge the work of both Nicole and Rochelle on behalf of the city with the Human Services Advisory Committee. This is the best of citizen engagement that we could hope for because it's about enhancing the quality of life in the city, providing vital services, and finding ways to distribute the funds the city has available to try and help social programs in their efforts to help our citizens. And we've been very proud, I think the council and our staff, we've been very proud that over the last four years, we've been able to increase the amount of resources for them to work with in increments of $25,000. There is a commitment by the council to look for at least 1% of the operating fund in the general fund, which is approximately $200,000. We're approaching that this year at $175,000 going forward into 2021. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Rochelle, who can introduce the Human Services Advisory Committee members here and give a report on what their activities have been. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe we have a PowerPoint. Bonnie, is that right? Perfect. Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Council. My name is Rochelle Sims. I'm the Management Analyst here at the City of Des Moines. I wanted to briefly walk you through our human services funding process and the work that has been done. Next slide, please. The City of Des Moines Human Service Program, just a bit of background. The city allocates funding through our competitive application process. Our committee members, who I'll introduce shortly, they are appointed by the city council. The city currently manages contracts for 20 programs, and we as staff work closely with our regional partners to not only assess what our community members here in Des Moines, their needs are, but also regionally. Next slide, please. COVID has impacted all facets of our community and not just our community members, but also the agencies that provide those services. So now more than ever, the human services agencies need the financial backing of the cities who support them. Next slide, please. Let's see. And, oh, yep. We, as a city, our ongoing efforts, which we continue to do, we can continue to convene with our partner groups virtually to stay connected with our agencies. Many of our ongoing conversations are around connecting with our agencies, seeing how they have pivoted their services during this time of COVID. We, as a city, continue to make payments quarterly on all of our contracts and have fulfilled all of those obligations. And we also assess to figure out what are the community gaps in need and where might funding be needed. Next slide, please. The human services funding for 2022, the Des Moines City participates in a shared one app. This is a common human service application process. This is where all of the nonprofits seeking funding can go to one site, and all of the 16 King County cities can see that and view that. It's incredibly efficient. In order to be considered, agencies must meet one or one or more of the funding priorities listed below. Essentially, what we as a city are looking for is, is this agency that is applying for funding able to meet expectations and needs of our community members? And with that, I will introduce our Human Service Advisory Committee. We have Lauren Frederick, who's on this call, Sheila Grace, and John Scully. We have a small but mighty team who have put in a lot of work and time reviewing these applications. Next slide, please. The Human Services Committee has reviewed over 54 grant applications with a financial request of over $400,000. They see to understand what all the agency is seeking. They look at the criteria. They discuss amongst themselves. If they have questions, we as city staff will follow up with the agencies to get the advisory committee all the answers that they need to make the decisions. So a tremendous amount of time and energy is devoted to this process, as you can imagine. So we want to thank our dedicated committee members for their efforts and time as it takes. Next slide, please. The 2021 Human Service Funding Recommendations is $175,000. As City Manager Matthias said, it's an increase from the previous $150,000. Many of the agencies that were funded previously will still be funded as they have demonstrated the incredible ability and they support our members of our community so well. And we'll also have new agencies who we will support. And the approval of these recommendations is on the consent calendar this evening. Next slide, please. And with that, that concludes my report. Thank you.
City Manager Matthias, you're muted, and I believe Councilmember Banks has a question for you.
Oh.
I do. We're...
Are we waiting for City Manager or?
Well, he needs to be able to answer.
Okay, there you are.
Michael, are you open to a question from Councilmember Banks?
Yes, please.
I appreciate that slideshow. I mean, that was really good. Thank you. It provides a constant reminder of what we're doing, what our obligations are, and even the fact that we can't help support everyone who really needs that support. So, so thank you, Rochelle. I appreciate that. And Nicole, my question is, your committee is small and mighty. So based on that, how exactly are you researching what those gaps are? What, how do you find those gaps? And what do you do once you find those gaps? I don't know if it's with your current agencies or if it's with just the community in general. Can you, can you help frame that, explain that?
Yeah, I can jump in if you want. So we, Rochelle and I both participate in kind of the South King County, all of the human services planners meet monthly. And so despite us having a decently small committee right now, we all kind of get together and talk about where there's gaps, where different services are needed. So we're pretty knowledgeable kind of in the region as far as what sort of supports we need to go after and maybe which ones are overfunded. So it's kind of a, I guess, collaboration within our agency, but then also with the other partners.
And that's how you kind of bridge the gap with the other agencies?
Yeah, a lot of the larger cities obviously have, you know, more funding available. So it's, it makes us feel more at ease that we know if, you know, bigger agencies or agencies are getting funding from multiple cities, it kind of helps us decide, okay, we want to focus our attention on ones that might need a little more support or ones that are more focused in Des Moines. So we kind of all talk with the different city planners, yeah.
And then just a technical question. How, how many new agencies have been added and/or are going to be added? You say you look at these applications, which are numerous.
Yeah.
But you're still funding current organizations.
So there were, I think Rochelle said, 54 total applications, and there's actually eight new agencies this cycle that are going to be funded. So it is, it's a lot of work as far as just the new contracts and goals and all of that, but we did decide to fund eight new agencies that we hadn't before.
Wonderful. Okay, that answers my questions. Thank you.
Okay, City Manager Matthias, we're back to you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Rochelle and Nicole. Thank you, committee, for all your great work. And it's something to build on. I think that there's very few things that are more important in this time of COVID and addressing the pandemic than appropriate services available for our community. So we're working toward that goal of increasing those, and we appreciate all the work you've done. We had planned this evening on having a life-saving award, but we had some logistical problems with, or difficulties with the person who would be involved in that, making it here tonight or to Zoom. So we're going to move that to December 3. And finally, on the the administration report, we wanted to give the Fire Chief an opportunity to say a few words. We have been, I think, really blessed. We talked with you back in March about opening up the Emergency Operations Center. That has been, you know, no one can use the word successful in this terrible time that we face. But certainly, the work of that, of the Operations Center, Shannon from our staff, Dan, others, our first responders, Chief Thomas, and Vic, and South King Fire and Rescue, along with the medics, have done an incredibly good job of responding to the virus, both in a preventive manner and in actual manner when it manifests itself. And so with the degree of cooperation and the strong relationships that exist with South King Fire, knowing that we're an institution, they're an institution, there's always a future, and at some future time, not all of us may be here to engage in those kind of relationships that have brought us such strong kind of opportunity to work together, that on your, on consent tonight is an ILA, inter-local agreement with South King Fire for the kind of permanent establishment of our relationship with the Emergency Operations Center. And with that, as a critical player and first responder, and new Fire Chief has done an incredible job, and this is his first year, right? He only got the pandemic to respond to right away. I wanted to let Vic say a few words and appreciate him coming. Thank you.
Well, thank you, City Manager Matthias, and thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council for the time that I can spend with you. You know, it is, it's, this is really an opportunity for the city. The city of Des Moines, as you all have been a part of, and certainly I have for a long time, relative to emergency management, has, has made small steps over the course of, well, I can tell you, since at least 97. Pretty small steps. And, and, and the commitment to emergency management for me is refreshing from, from the city, and that's demonstrated by, by the, the change in, in, in philosophy and the change in trajectory relative to its, its importance and its priority. And, and that's demonstrated by with the Assistant Police Chief Mark Kui as your emergency manager, and the appointment of Shannon Kirchberg to your emergency preparedness manager. And I know there's a whole host of folks, as the City Manager pointed out, that also support that. But, but those two have worked directly with them and, and really got to know the Assistant Chief Kui, Assistant Chief Kui during the pandemic. And just the level of work and the professionalism that he brings and Shannon brings, that represents the city both locally and on a regional level are, are really, really cool to see. So relative to your agenda item number four, the inter-local agreement with South King Fire and Rescue, I'll just go over with that a little bit what that means. And I'm hoping that you do approve that inter-local agreement. But what you're doing is, is you're taking the city to the next level of emergency management by advancing the capabilities of the emergency disaster operations. You will now have a dedicated Emergency Operations Center. It's not one that's stored in a box in a closet somewhere that, that you hope you remember how to put all the stuff together and, and then you hope it works after you get it set up. But this is a highly secured facility in one of our fire stations, the station in Des Moines. It's a dedicated facility that you walk into, you turn on the lights, and you go to work. And you can, you, you go to work carrying out the five critical functions of emergency management, those being command, operations, planning, logistics, and finance, and administration. The, and we've witnessed those, or you have witnessed those, we've all witnessed those as we've, as we've gone through this pandemic. And I would say that, that what, the two most critical components of this agreement are the ability to share staff that are properly, properly trained and, and staff members that have the authority to carry out actions that are necessary. And so that, that's an important piece of this. The second most important piece, and is really critical, is the, the communication system. This, this is a sophisticated encrypted, encrypted system of networks. It provides redundancy. It provides different technologies that are all integrated. And, and you have a phone systems that, we have telephone systems, we have our system, the city system, we're able to bring, bring that into the Emergency Operations Center because we're right across the street from, from Public Works. And so there's redundancy both for the city and for the fire district. So this is really, really a big win for, for both organizations and certainly the, the communities and areas that we both serve. You know, your, your Emergency Operations Center is flexible. It's, it's got integrated systems that can be used for any incident, you know, any, any size, any location, any complexity. So again, it really, really has brought the city, or it really will bring the city, to the next level of emergency management. It, it allows your staff to have the resources and the ability to, to get information in a timely manner, to disseminate information to your citizens in a timely manner, to your businesses. It, it provides a, really a continuity of operations and government and community communication. It, it's, it, it really truly does bring the city of Des Moines to the next level. And, and so I'm very, I'm very proud to enter into this partnership. It's, it's been, you know, a long time coming, and I'm very proud of the council, and I'm very proud of your support for what you've done. And I'm sure that, that that is, is directly correlated to your citizens, the citizens that we both serve as well. So it's always a privilege to speak with you, and thank you again, and thank you in advance for your support.
Thank you. Thank you, Fire Chief. I want to also mention and acknowledge the work of Tim George and the Fire District's attorneys and working together to establish the ILA. Tim George and the Fire District's attorneys and working together to establish the ILA. So with that, Mayor, that concludes our administration report.
Thank you, Michael. Will the clerk please read the consent calendar?
Item one, approval of vouchers. Item two, approval of minutes. Item three, twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two Human Services Advisory Committee Funding Recommendations. Item four, inter-local agreement with South King Fire District regarding emergency management services and operations. Item five, small business proclamation. Item six, Eighth Avenue South, South Two Sixty-Four Street and South Two Fifty-Sixth Street, Two Sixty-Fifth Street, Lake, Lake Haven Water and Sewer Districts, inter-local agreement and consultant-on-call agreement, task assignment amendment for engineering services. Item seven, draft ordinance number twenty dash zero six three, suspending restrictions on use of one-time revenue for twenty twenty-one. Item eight, midway park enhancements, removal of non-park-related structures. And that concludes the consent calendar, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? I see Councilmember Nutting.
I'm moved.
And I have a second by Councilmember Bangs. Okay. Does any council member wish to remove any items?
I do, Mayor. Item three.
Item three, the Human Services Advisory Committee funding.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so at this point, we'll be voting on the consent agenda minus the item number three. So all those in favor of the consent agenda, with the exception of item number three, as Red, please raise your right hand and say hi. I'm sorry, wait a sec before the vote. I see a hand from Councilmember Bangs. Nope, oh, she was just ahead of me. I'm sorry. Okay, all those in favor, please raise your right hand until I call your name. Okay, I see Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Bangs, Councilmember Buxton, Deputy Mayor Mahoney, myself, and Councilmember Nutting. Thank you. So that portion passes six-zero. Now we'll go back to item number number three, and because Councilmember Harris pulled it, I will refer the microphone to him.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to open by just saying that I am very happy with all of the items, the grants that I recognize, and I am very thankful to staff for doing the work and the Human Services Advisory Board. However, I asked for background information on this item and was denied by our city manager, and it will be a cold day in hell before I ever vote for anything if I do not get a responsive reply to a request for information. And to be clear, all I wanted to know was just a basic amount of information about each of these, I'm sure, wonderful organizations. And and yeah, so I will vote no on this, and I will not take any more time because this is just a protest, an ongoing thing where if I ask for information, if any council member asks for basic information, they should receive it happily by the administration. Thank you for your time.
Okay. I don't know what the information was that you asked for, but this is, I mean, the Human Services
I just asked for the grants, just, hey, you know, explain what each of these organizations do. Pretty, you know, so I can applaud them. That's really it. I will be happy to send you the emails. But every time I ask for information, I am told no.
Deputy Mayor Mahoney, and then I'll call Councilmember Nutting.
I'm a firm believer we stay in the lanes we're supposed to stay in. The Human Services Committee reviews all of these in depth. I, on many occasions, have looked at the names, and I do my own research. But what I've found with the Human Services Service Committee is their exhaustive research, and I think that their recommendations are something that I support because I know they put the time and effort in.
Thank you. I totally agree. And 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 that also includes the volunteer citizens that help on that committee. Councilmember Nutting?
Can't agree more with the two of you. So in that regards, I make the motion to approve the Human Services Funding Recommendations of the Human Services Advisory Committee in the amount of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, and authorize the city manager to sign the contracts for the agencies awarded the grant funds.
Second. Go ahead, Tracy, you take it.
Second.
Okay, so I have the motion by Councilmember Nutting and the second by Councilmember Buxton. Any further discussion? Councilmember Buxton?
So just for clarity, a little bit here for any of the public who are listening or watching, when we did receive the information in regard to this grant funding, there was a summary statement on the spreadsheet next to every organization that did explain what they did. For example, one thing I was looking for was an equal spread or a general spread of types of services across the community. I was looking for domestic violence coverage, poison control coverage, certain kinds of health coverage, dental coverage, mental health services. So I wanted to see a decent spread of types of services that we were providing. So just by looking at the spreadsheet, I could tell that. Now, if I did want to find out a little bit more about the organization, would have been real easy to Google it. And and honestly, the the staff has assigned that segment of responsibility to the committee, so it would have almost taken a a direct contact with the committee from a council member to get more information. But and but in all fairness, too, they they're here right now to answer any specific questions that we might have. I mean, every single, and and that was the response, Councilmember Harris, I did see that the staff said, well, we're going to have a detailed presentation, the inferences that you could ask questions. And these people, Lauren and Sheila and John, would have a ton of information for you if you had any question for a specific agency because they they've really looked into these. So I think that that was the idea that you could ask if you had a specific question or wondered if they had covered their base as well, you could ask that now. I think that that was that was the idea. So thank you.
Okay, the
May I?
Yes, City Manager Mathias, and then I'll go to Councilmember Harris.
Just just briefly, I think that Councilmember Harris's attitude, it'll be a cold, cold day in hell, speaks for itself. I think that we have a great process with this advisory committee. It's not the prerogative or purview of council members to second guess that or to participate in it. This is the opportunity it's brought forth as part of the budget. And based on that, I think that staff has done a great job of supporting the committee, and the committee's done a great job of discharging their responsibilities.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris.
Oh, it is exactly my prerogative to second guess any dollars spent by this city. Now, in no way did I disparage the great work that they did. I'm sure that it's fantastic. I recognize many of these grants, and so I'll just say it again for the third time. Thank you for your service. However, I do not want to show up to a meeting and then ask questions on the fly. You cannot get good answers to any kind of detailed stuff. I like to do my studying ahead of time. And if I had had the opportunity to spend fifteen minutes with each of the members or even one of them, I'm sure I would have gotten my questions answered. But I am not allowed to do that, and that's the point. I'm done.
Okay, at this point, we have a motion on the table. So I will look for a show of hands. But before I I call that, thank you. Okay, I didn't see Councilmember Nutting. So, okay, so all those in favor of the motion regarding the Human Services advising, I'm sorry, the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two Human Services Advisory Committee Funding Recommendations, all those in favor, please raise your hand until I call your name. Councilmember Nutting, myself, Deputy Mayor Mahoney, Councilmember Bangs, and Councilmember Buxton. All those opposed? Councilmember Harris, motion passes five to one. Okay. I'll now read the proclamation and summary into the record that we just passed. Now, therefore, the Des Moines City Council hereby proclaims Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday, Saturday, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday, not only on Small Business Saturday, but throughout the year. And this takes us to the first of our three public hearings.
Mayor, if I could just jump in really quick, Lauren and Sheila, if you guys, you definitely can stay if you want, but you don't have to stay. So thank you for being here, and feel free to hop off if you'd like to go on with your evening.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Your efforts are very much appreciated.
Thank you so much to everybody and to Tracy for being in our committee as well, and just all the work that Nicole and Rochelle have done. So thanks.
Thank you.
I do want to clarify that I'm not on the committee, though.
I know that you're not on the committee.
Okay, yeah. But you guys are awesome. I just bow down to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so this will take us to our first public hearing. The twenty twenty-one property tax levies, and we have a staff presentation by our Finance Director, Beth Anne Rowe. Yeah, I will now open the public here.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Actually, I've asked Sean, the Deputy Finance Director, to take the twenty twenty-one property tax levies. So I'd like to introduce him and let him take take the presentation.
Great. Thank you, Beth Anne, and thank you, Mayor and Deputy Mayor and City Council. If we can go to the next slide, please. So in your packet tonight, you have two ordinances and one resolution. The state law requires us to adopt two resolutions. One is for the overall dollar amount of the levy for twenty twenty-one, and the other ordinance is for the percentage increase in the levy. And there's also a resolution in your packet tonight, a resolution of substantial need, which I'll touch on here in just a second. So the overall assessed valuation within the city of Des Moines increased by over two-hundred-and-seventy-one million dollars for the year twenty twenty-one, an increase of about five-point-eight percent. That's an average increase, of course, so some properties will be higher than that, and some will be lower. The city also had an additional thirty-eight million dollars of new construction added to the property tax base, resulting in just under forty-three thousand dollars of additional property tax revenue for twenty twenty-one. The proposed levy in your packet tonight does not include an allowable one percent increase of taxes, which equates to fifty-two thousand five-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars. That allowable increase has not been included because through the use of one-time revenue, which Beth Anne will talk about here in a second, like the use of one-time sales tax and other items, we were able to balance the twenty twenty-one proposed budget without the one percent allowable increase in taxes. So again, it lends itself to, or is an example of, the sound financial stewardship of the city that we are able to propose a property tax levy that, again, does not include the one percent allowable increase. The proposed tax rate for twenty twenty-one is one dollar, one-point-oh-seven-seven-three, and that represents a decrease of just under four percent from the current levy for twenty twenty. And the reason that it's a decrease is the taxes that you pay on an annual basis are composed of two things, the assessed valuation and the tax levy. So as I mentioned at the start of this slide, the assessed valuation went went up quite a bit for twenty twenty-one, so that results in a decrease in the tax levy. And these numbers are, again, as mentioned at the bottom, all estimates from the King County Assessor as of October twenty-ninth. And next slide, please. So this slide and the next one is more background information for you as council members. The recent high levy for the city was a dollar sixty-five. That was back in twenty sixteen. And the proposed levy for twenty twenty-one, which I just mentioned, is a thirty-four-point-eight percent decrease from that high levy in the year twenty twenty-sixteen, or excuse me, twenty sixteen. The table on the right shows in blue the city's property tax levy, and the orange bar at the top represents the total levy. So you can see that the city levy decreases at a faster rate than the overall total levy for the city. And next slide, please. I wanted to mention or highlight that, of course, the city levy is just one part of the overall total levy for the city, and the numbers that you see in the table on the left are for all taxing jurisdictions within the city of Des Moines. So the highest, in this case, levy is from the school district. I should mention, for transparency sake, the school district and the fire district levies that you see in this chart are both normal levies as well as voter-approved additional levies. So the total levy for twenty twenty, this is the majority of parcels within the city have this levy rate, which is twelve-point-eight-six dollars. That happens to include, again, the highest number of parcels in the city. So in this case, the school district that you see listed here is for Highland School District. But overall, as you can see in the table on the left and the pie chart on the right, the city of Des Moines portion of the overall property tax levy is less than ten percent. In this case, eight-point-seven-two percent. So just wanted to point that out for background information for council that of the total levy for the city, again, the city's portion of that that comes to the city of Des Moines is less than nine percent. And with that, that concludes my presentation.
Okay. It's now it's now time for public comment. Has anyone?
No one has signed up to speak.
Okay, seeing no one has signed up to to speak. Council, do you have any questions? I am not seeing, I see Councilmember Harris.
More of a quick comment. I'm disappointed that none of the public have signed up because this is the one thing that everybody
Can't comment during questions.
Yes, yeah. Thank you for the point of order. These are, at this point, public hearings are very formatted and for, because they are
No, you're absolutely right.
So questions? Comments will be allowed as as we get to the vote. So am I seeing any questions at this time? Okay. Seeing none, I will now close the public hearing. Council, is there a motion? And I will recognize Councilmember Nutting.
I move to adopt draft resolution number two-zero-dash-zero-six-four, declaring a substantial need for purposes of setting the limit factor for the property tax levy to twenty twenty-one.
Okay.
And I have a second by Councilmember Bangs.
Not sure how strongly you made the point.
Michael. Okay.
Okay. Is there any discussion at this time? Councilmember Harris.
So I just wanted to, yeah, actually, it kind of was a question. This is one of the most sensitive things for the public. I get asked about it all the time. I was wondering if there wasn't some special effort the city might be able to make to get this information out to the public as to what percentage of their taxes the city actually takes. It's actually a pretty good story that I think they would appreciate knowing about. That's it.
And to respond, I can actually say that, uh, I have spent the better part of eleven years making sure that the city does know that every time I speak publicly. I saw a hand by Deputy Mayor Mahoney.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I would just add also that it, it's been on many, many presentations during council meetings and out through the public. It's readily accessible at King County, uh, at the, at the assessor's office. You quickly can go in and you can see where your property taxes go. It's a well-known thing if you maintain or look at your property.
But sometimes you do have to reiterate it, and we do. So anyway. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand until I call your name. Councilmember Nutting, Councilmember Buxton, Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Banks, myself, and Deputy Mayor Mahoney. Okay, motion passes six zero. Councilmember Nutting.
I move to suspend, uh, Rule twenty-six A in order to enact draft ordinance number two zero dash zero six six on first reading.
Is there a second? I see Deputy Mayor Mahoney. All those in favor, raise your right hand until I call your name. Okay, Deputy Mayor Mahoney, myself, uh, Councilmember Banks, Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Buxton, and Councilmember Nutting. Okay, motion passes six to zero, six zero. Councilmember Nutting.
I move to enact draft ordinance number two zero zero six six, determining the amount of funds to be raised by ad valorem taxes for the year twenty twenty-one for general city expenditures.
Do I have a second?
Second.
See Deputy Mayor Mahoney. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand until I call your name. Deputy Mayor Mahoney, myself, Councilmember Banks, Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Nutting, and Councilmember Buxton. Motion passes six zero. Councilmember Nutting.
I move to suspend Rule twenty-six A in order to enact draft ordinance number two zero dash zero six four on first reading.
Second.
Second by Deputy Mayor Mahoney. All those in favor, please raise your hand until I call your name. Deputy Mayor Mahoney, myself, Councilmember Banks, uh, Councilmember Harris, uh, Councilmember Buxton, and Councilmember Nutting. Motion passes six zero. Councilmember Nutting.
I move to enact draft ordinance number two zero dash zero six four, authorizing the increase in ad valorem taxes for the year two zero, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-one for general city expenditures.
Second.
Second by Deputy Mayor Mahoney. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand until I call your name. Okay, I've got Councilmember Buxton, Councilmember Nutting, Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Banks, myself, and Deputy Mayor Mahoney. Motion passes six zero. Okay, this now takes us forward to item number two, our twenty twenty-one annual budget. We have a staff presentation again by Finance Director Beth Ann Rowe. I will now open the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Beth Ann Rowe, Finance Director. Thank you. What we have tonight before you is the twenty twenty-one annual budget. From last meeting, the, um, the amounts have not changed. Our budget overview is tonight, we're asking you to approve a budget of a little over ninety-two million dollars. The general fund is twenty-eight million, seven hundred, seventy-six thousand, six eighty-one. Especially, we have our categories of funds, special revenue funds, debt service, our capital improvement funds, Marina, surface water management, and internal services. Um, next slide. As we had in our previous meeting, our twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-five general fund financial forecast, we have, uh, budgeted and adjusted for, um, our impact of COVID and our continuation of COVID. As you approved in the consent agenda tonight, we've asked to retain the one-time, um, sales and BNO tax revenue in twenty twenty-one as well. We're, um, using that to ensure that we stay above our sixteen point six seven percent fund balance. If things improve and we're able to later in the year, we will, uh, we'll make, we'll try to have that as part of the reserve and not use it. And as you can see, or as the previous public hearing is that in the general fund, we've balanced the budget without taking the one percent property tax. So, and then, um, in our forecast, we've been able to main the sixteen point six seven throughout twenty twenty-five. And next slide. And so our conclusion is the twenty twenty-one annual budget presented is a balanced budget that is sustainable and solvent into the foreseeable future, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Has anyone signed up to speak?
No one has signed up to speak.
Okay. Uh, seeing that no one has signed up to speak, council, do you have any questions? And this is specific for questions at this time. I see Councilmember Banks.
Thank you, Beth Ann. You hesitated there, so I wanted to make doubly sure that that one-time money that we approved, you said you would not use if you did not have to, and you would put it in the reserve. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay, because you kind of stumbled and I wasn't sure. Okay, I just want to make it clear. All right, thank you.
I believe what, um, why I stumbled was we have projected four hundred thousand to receive in twenty twenty-one, and we've only programmed three hundred thousand. So we were trying to make sure that if we don't have to use it because of our sound financial practices, that we won't. But we want to retain it to ensure that we have that fund balance and that we can adjust to risk as we, um, continue to respond and mitigate COVID.
Right, okay, that, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? I see Councilmember Harris.
Beth Ann, this is sort of off on a slight tangent. My understanding is that the city does every five years, is it like an IT review? Excuse me, review, um, like, you know, the website, things of that sort. Is that not the case? I think it's coming up in a year.
I would have to check that. I don't have the answer for you as far as timing, but I can get back to you with that.
Can you give me a, but that would include, that's sort of inclusive of all the, you know, computery stuff, the website and, um, you know, IT in general.
Every year is part of the IT replacement fund.
Yeah.
We do an assessment of our systems, our servers, our computers, and, um, we have a rotating schedule on replacement. And so I know that we evaluate that on a yearly basis, um, because it's part of our internal service fund.
I thought there was something like several years ago where you did a survey of what people would like to see on the website and that sort of thing.
I've only been here two and a half years, so I apologize.
All right. Thank you.
Are there any other questions from council? Okay, seeing none, I will now close the public hearing. Councilmember Nutting.
I move to pass draft ordinance number two zero dash zero six two, establishing the twenty twenty-one annual budget for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Nutting, seconded by Councilmember Banks. Is there any discussion? Okay, I see. Okay, I see Councilmember Nutting, Councilmember Buxton, Councilmember Harrison, Councilmember Mahoney. Councilmember, uh, Nutting, you've had the floor.
I just wanted to thank staff for all their hard work and effort and, uh, City Manager Michael Mathias for, um, working with everyone to get this budget. I know it's razor-thin and, uh, moving five dollars around, um, moves, uh, just, just ruins the whole thing. So, um, I just appreciate all the time and effort to get us through this. It was tough to put the one-time funds in there if needed. Obviously, because I was on council when we were at a shortfall. But I, I'm just really proud of our staff and our city manager for being able to get us through this. This, this tough time to, to keep the solvent. So thank you guys very much, and it's, it's awesome to pass a budget like this. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Buxton.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, uh, I echo my colleagues' statements in regard to the staff and their work. I'm, I'm continually impressed with our staff across the board with all tasks. And this is, this is just one of them, but this is the biggest one. Uh, I'd like to really speak directly to the community for just a couple minutes because this meeting really is for you. In this difficult era of compromised trust in government, I just want to do my part to engender faith in your council members. You know, this is our number one job. If we didn't have anything else to do as electeds in this community, this would be the thing that we, this would be our number one thing, is to make sure to oversee this and make sure that this budget is sustainable and meeting the needs of this community and the priorities in this community. And I believe with all my heart that even, uh, every single one of us, all seven of us, regardless of our political leanings, or even if we have appreciated each other, our approaches, I think we all went wholeheartedly into this process to do everything we could, combing through this page by page to make sure that this budget was meeting the priorities that have been expressed by this community. We took it seriously, and I feel like we have all worked hard to represent you. So my, my findings, in my opinion, that this, this budget reflects good policy. It keeps us sustainably in the black into the foreseeable future. It provides a sufficient reserve which protects our future, saving hundreds of thousands of dollars in bonding and projects. And as we move forward, it reflects the priorities of keeping us a safe, green, I can, uh, keeping this community a safe, green economic investment, meeting create, meeting our community needs and creating a destination community, which is what I believe I've heard from the residents in this community. As far as the green part, I'm looking forward to working a flourishing urban forestry fund. And whether we do that individually as a city or through partnerships like Forterra, looking forward to that. And then speaking of partnerships, this budget also, um, reflects a retention of our community partners in addressing regional and state issues. So I appreciate that as well. And all of this, which you've already heard, without using our entitled property tax levy amount. So I feel like this year, that's a gift to our community in a hard time. One of the most encouraging things that I heard in the last few weeks came from our, um, from our city manager. And this is what he said, in paraphrasing, that COVID is driving the response and policy in most cities, not just in our county and state, but nationwide. For us, though, COVID is not driving. We still are. Simply, COVID has provided an opportunity for us to be creative. And what an incredible statement that we can make to our community that COVID is not driving us. We are still driving and we're presenting, I feel, into the foreseeable, foreseeable future, a great financial report. So I'm happy to approve this budget tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so, uh, I would like to make an amendment to the budget. Um, is this the appropriate point or, uh, in the next phase?
I believe our next, our next phase is annual budget amendments.
Okay. So should I put it off until then?
Well, one moment, please.
If you want to make an amendment to this budget, now is the time.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um, colleagues, I've spent all of you, um, my intention, I would like the city to join the National League of Cities. The cost is nineteen hundred and fifty-three dollars, and, um, our sister cities, all are members. And I have seen the, it, it's just been a tremendous value on, for me personally, I've seen on airport issues, but, um, just across the line, transportation, growth management, they are a, uh, a real voice at the federal level. And I think it would benefit all of us to be in sync with the, uh, other cities around the airport. So that's it.
Are you making a motion?
I make a motion that the city of Des Moines, uh, formally join the National League of Cities.
Is there a second? Seeing none, this dies for lack of a second. Okay, I will go to Deputy Mayor Mahoney.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a good story in a bad time. I can't, uh, I couldn't have said it better than Councilmember Buxton did about all the hard work. I thank staff. That's it.
Okay, is there anyone else who wishes to make a comment or anything before we go forward? I do have a few, um, remarks I'd like to make. First of all, we, we just had a motion at the table and die for lack of a second. And, um, I can only speak for myself, but I believe my, my colleagues are coming from a similar place in that, um, there was no presentation, there was no information. The National League of Cities may be a worthwhile endeavor, but with, without any, uh, information as to why we should join and, and deal with specifics. I know it's only seems like two thousand dollars, but I also have to say that right now, we are putting one-time money into our budget to balance and maintain our reserves. I frankly, it would, I'd have to have more information as to what the true value was. The city has been a member of the National League of Cities in the past, but is not now. There are some issues that they have come forward with that, uh, with, for example, with, um, the Paris Accord that we have supported. But at this point, um, it's a bit, it's, it's not clear as to what our advantage would be. So that is why I personally did not second, uh, offer a second.
I reached back to you a week ago and yesterday on this item. That's.
You sent an email. That is not a discussion, and I am in my comments right now, and I am not prepared to have that discussion. In fact, because of the, the lack of information. In fact, because of the the lack of information, there wasn't the opportunity to have a reasonable discussion. And that's why I think it's very important that council members do reach out and talk to each other. But back to the budget. I really do think this is an outstanding piece of work, and I cannot thank city manager Mathias and Beth Anro and all of the executive leadership and all of the managers and so forth that came forth to make this thing happen. I think there's some real key elements to note, and I think councilmember Buxton and my other colleagues have done an excellent job at pointing things out. But I sometimes things really beg repeating. You know, we are in a continued state of uncertainty due to this pandemic. So this is the best thinking that and 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 it's conservative in one way. But it's 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 also, you know, as Beth Ann said, if we don't use this money, it's staying in the reserve. I mean, it's conservative, but it's also well thought out. It maintains our solvency. It is sustainable. And the key thing about it being sustainable, as was pointed out, it's not sustainable just for now. It's sustainable into the foreseeable future, and that's about five years out from what we can see right now. And this is done without cutting our essential services. And taking into consideration, again, we are not collecting a one percent property tax recapture. And and we are still moving forward in a very solvent and sustainable way. This is outstanding work. Now, I ask, how did we get here? How what enabled us to get to where we are right now in the middle of this pandemic? Where we are in a little bit different situation than some of our our sister cities. Well, we got here because of a unique situation that we got ourselves into five plus years ago where we were looking at our solvency and and possibly being insolvent. And what happened? What changed then? Well, the council and the administration teams came together. We worked as one team, and we focused on the city, the city of Des Moines, a city our size, what we could really afford and what we could really accomplish. And we stuck to some very sound financial and economic principles, applied them well, and that's why we are here today. It's a different set of circumstances, but these principles still hold true. And this says a tremendous amount about the leadership of the city, holding true to sound financial principles. So we will remain a a city well into the foreseeable future. That is what our residents have asked from us, and this is what we are doing on their behalf. And I just think it's really important that the community and everyone recognize this, that was as we go forward, it's really about recognizing the value of our team, putting aside special agendas and special focuses, only focus on the city of Des Moines and what we need to do for our future. And that's what this budget does, and I have nothing but praise for all those who worked on that, including my colleagues in this at the DAS, as well as the staff, because I know we all spent hours combing through this thing. And it's just one of the finest pieces of work, and especially in these circumstances that I have seen. So I too will be happy to support this budget. I'm sorry. Oh, I see a hand from councilmember Banks.
Yes, sorry for the delay there in the comment, but I also have a question. So my comment is, you know, I would I would like to say everything that everyone said has been right on target. I would like to note, though, that there are several community members that really and and citizens in our city, they don't really know how their city runs. And that's an education process that I believe we'll take on in the future, regardless of all the the city hall, you know, the the state of the cities that you've done, mayor, and the council members have done. There's still a huge number of people that don't even understand how our city works. So given this budget, the only time I think most people would really have a problem is if we had to increase taxes, if we had to increase anything related to the citizens in our city. And I and I would say because we haven't had to, and we don't have to at this point, that everything is pretty calm for them. So yeah, all the hard work, all of the you know, time and effort that it takes is well worth it to make sure that our citizens, our city, is financially stable. Because you can look around and see others that are really struggling. So that's my comment. My question related to councilmember Harris and his desire for the council to entertain his request. Is there another time that this can happen where more information or a presentation can be provided in the future?
Well. Well, because it was not added to the docket and was not voted down, it can be evaluated by staff and brought back at a later date. Had it failed, then it would be not eligible to return to the docket. So it actually is something that the city could consider still. And I would yield to our city manager and his team to look into that and see how that plays with our strategies with the multitude of strategies that we have in place today, and would it be something that would be of value? Or complimentary or not so? And so and I see city manager Mathias making comments.
Yeah, I think that I think, you know, I agree with that. I think it dies for lack of a second because it's brought up the day before the second reading of a budget that's been part of a discussion for at least six weeks. But I I think that there are a number of considerations. There was a rationale for leaving the National League of Cities. There are ways that that what they can provide is addressed organizationally across the state of Washington and elsewhere. So we'll be happy to respond if we need to, although I think we'd like to get through this process and get ourselves through the third of December, and then perhaps in the new year. That's something that the the mayor would support or that I would support or that three council members would support. We could get it on an agenda for discussion. But I'm I'm just kind of saying in advance that simply creating the opportunity for consideration does not necessarily assure its passage.
And and I'm not asking that. I'm simply asking what that process is, and I think the mayor outlined that well. And I think that whatever the information is, it could be provided to council, including what we already have in place, which is Anthony Hempstead. The background on on this organization, it is information gathering, because I am not aware of what has occurred with, you know, this particular organization. So I'm not asking for anything other than that. And not now and not in the relatively near future.
You mentioned Anthony, so I just want to say that you know, what basically happens in in his recommendation, the Association of Washington Cities has a close relationship with the National League of Cities and provides to cities that do not that are not members, all the information that comes from NLC. And we're very involved with the Association of Washington Cities. So that's just.
Yeah, that can be added to the information. Thank you.
Bottom line is, we do review our legislative priorities and our and our government strategy regularly, and it would be sometime next year. And, you know, I will leave that to city manager Mathias to inject the the information, any information that he may have, should the National League of Cities be a consideration. But I I have been here for quite a while, and the Association of Washington Cities does exactly what city manager Mathias said. So anyway, at this point, I defer until we get to those conversations in in the coming year. So with that, are there is there any other discussion about this budget? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of this budget, please raise your hand until I call your name. Okay, deputy mayor Mahoney, myself, councilmember Banks, councilmember Harris, councilmember Nutting, councilmember Buxton. This passes six zero. Okay, this takes us to item number three, the twenty twenty annual budget amendments. And again, we have a staff presentation by our finance director, Beth Anro, and I will now open the public hearing.
Good evening again, Beth Anro, Finance Director. If you can go to the next page, please. This is my this is my one slide for the presentation. As in the packet before you, there's probably about little over seven pages of detail for the amendments for the twenty twenty budget. And if you notice in the general fund, the the decrease in revenues and expenditures are truly the impact of COVID. I probably the most significant decreases in the revenues were related to sales and BNO taxes for our businesses, then as well as closing of city facilities and our charges for services for our parks and rec program and for our facility rentals. And then our expenditures for addressing, and I mean, the several actions we took to address COVID. Then we had the probably the other one in in our state or everywhere is the entertainment industry. So our hotel motel taxes were way low. And our automated speed enforcement fund is for our school zone cameras. And since the schools were closed, there is no revenue off that program. The one nice thing is that the company has not charges for for our contracts. So we didn't have expenses going out when we with no revenues coming in. So that was very nice of them. The Transportation Benefit District, we did not budget anything for that fund due to the challenge. And I know that there's still outstanding items, but I did recognize the revenue that we received or expect to receive in twenty twenty. The amount in expenditures going out is the balance of Transportation Benefit District dollars we had in the fund before I nine seventy-six became effective. So we're moving that money out to the Artoral Street Program. Then pretty much in the capital projects are changes that we had due to our approved capital improvement plan, as well as the Marina and Surface Water Management Funds were adjustments there. Down below in our internal service funds, our equipment rental replacement and our facility repair replacement, we reduced assessments to the general fund for twenty twenty to provide some relief in the operating budgets. And also, we adjusted capital or items programs in the facility repair and replacement due to the decrease in assessments. So overall, the change in the budget that I'm requesting tonight for approval is to increase overall revenues by five hundred and twenty-five thousand nine hundred and ninety-one dollars and to increase expenditures one point little over one point eight million. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. It's now time for the public comment portion. Has anyone signed up to speak?
No one has signed up to.
Okay, no one has signed up to speak. So seeing that no one has, council, do you have any questions? Seeing none, I will now close the public hearing. Councilmember Nutting.
I move to suspend rule twenty-six A in order to enact draft ordinance number two zero zero six seven on the first reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
Banks seconded. All those in favor, please raise your hand until I call your name. Councilmember Nutting, councilmember Buxton, councilmember Harris, councilmember Banks, myself and deputy mayor Mahoney passes six zero. Okay, councilmember Nutting.
I move to enact draft ordinance number two zero dash zero six seven relating to the municipal finance amending the twenty twenty annual budget adopting adopted in ordinance number one seven two nine.
Second.
Motion made by councilmember Nutting, seconded by councilmember Banks. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand until I call your name. Councilmember Nutting, councilmember Buxton, councilmember Harris, councilmember Banks, myself and deputy mayor Mahoney passes six zero. Okay, now it is time for board and committee reports and councilmember comments. And tonight, we will start with councilmember Nutting.
I don't have much to say. I just want to thank the public and our staff for the tough budget seasons, just absolutely tough for everybody. And we made it through. We passed the budget, the sustainable. And I just want to thank everybody involved for what they've done. And those are my comments. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, councilmember Harris.
I guess I will leave it to my colleagues to comment on the environment meeting we just had. But the questions were really good and it's yeah, it's there's there's a lot to talk about with stormwater. And I will just add on to my earlier comments. I want my colleagues, because I'm not sure you realize, the city manager simply refuses to reply to basic requests for information. The chief of police simply refuses to reply to requests for basic information. The city manager and the chief of police refuse to set up a fifteen-minute phone call with me. They have told me they do not want to speak, okay? And that is I I don't know where to go with that, regardless of your feelings about me as a human being or whatever. Our job is oversight. And we have to have the ability to communicate, to ask questions in order to do the job, unless this is simply a figurehead kind of a deal. And I was thinking about making a motion to demand that all council members be able to have a phone call with the city manager, but God, that just sounded so it's just, is it really like that? And so I decided I'll hold off on that for a while, and I sure hope that my colleagues can exert whatever moral authority they choose to and fix this situation. There needs to be a basic level of respect and deference for the entire council at all times. Thank you.
Okay, councilmember Buxton.
Thank you, Mayor. So yeah, shortly after the last council meeting, we we had, I attended a skip meeting, which is South King Housing and Homelessness Partners. And we had made a motion in our meeting with regard to that board meeting that was coming up. I just wanted to report back. We had a resolution that we passed in that meeting, and it was in regard to housing stability policies. And I was happy to be part of that. The the skip board was supporting housing stability policies in the region. But I appreciated the amendments that we worked through that instead of supporting a range of specific policies that address displacement, eviction, rent, landlords, we we made an umbrella policy or an umbrella resolution that allowed what this did is allow different municipalities in our partnership to address housing stability policies as they saw fit, instead of addressing certain specific policies. So I appreciated the way that the board approached that, and our action helped with that. Also, in the last couple of weeks, just as another note, the region, the four-county region under Puget Sound Regional Council ratified Vision twenty fifty. And there was interestingly some robust regional. under Puget Sound Regional Council ratified Vision 2050. And there was interestingly some robust regional discussion regarding growth targets in Snohomish County. I just want to say that the document's not perfect, but it seeks to guide regional growth while protecting our infrastructure, our environment, and most importantly, our people. So I just want to say that the city of Des Moines had an opportunity to advocate at the table. And we were able to make some gains in support of, in regard to airport issues and environmental issues and planning policies that were favorable, favorable to our city. I also attended, oh, I'm on the King County Domestic Violence Initiative Task Force. And one thing, we, we had a recent meeting and I just want to report out again, the city of Des Moines was called out in regard to being forward-thinking. And I'm seeing this especially in regard to our police force regionally. I'm just proud of our force and our city. This, this particular car call out, we were noted above more, most cities in King County in regard to our e-service for filing, serving and receiving documents. So this creates safety for our officers and our public. And it has increased engagement for people in interacting with what they need to take care of. So touche again to our force and our forward-thinking. I appreciate what we're doing here in our city. I, one more comment, Councilmember Harris, I just, I'm saved this comment till last. The reason I did not, I knew I was not going to for, second your motion because I knew that well, I felt like it wasn't going to pass. And if it didn't, it would die. So not seconding, it allows it to move forward. There wasn't enough collaboration or information to second it. It would have failed. So no second offers a future opportunity for, for Councilmember Harris to collaborate with colleagues and staff and field all answered unanswered questions and research before bringing it back. So I felt like my non-seconding actually was promoting more movement because I honestly have interest. So that I wanted to clarify that for both you and the public who watched. So that was all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Banks.
Oops, there we are. Thank you, Mayor. Two meetings I attended. Public Safety Emergency Management along with my colleagues. Deputy Mayor Mahoney and then Councilmember Martinelli, I believe, was also sick. So he was not able to attend. We did have a really good presentation on animal control, the update there. And I must say that Scott Etchell has been doing a grand job. I mean, he's gotten a lot of information into a program so that he's able to pull numbers up and find out exactly how many issues that we've had in terms of, you know, animal control. And I would say that what it looks like today, and I'm sure we can get this on our website or at least available for our council members, calls for service in 2018 were 574, 2019, 426. And we're down year-to-date 394, which says a lot, which is really good. So either people are understanding exactly the process related to strays and problems with dogs and cats. And do we include raccoons? Because I have an issue. No, I'm only getting. So he's done a really good job there. And then we had an overview and slideshow presentation by Corey Fatterman on code enforcement update. And I would love to have both of these slides on available for council members because the cases are very interesting. He's able to write tickets again. Dump vouchers. He's shown before and after pictures on all of our, not all, but the, the, the very visible graffiti and tagging. And then of course, of course, stop work notices on illegal work and responding to complaints and being able to get owners to clean up their properties. It's been wonderful. So that was a great, great report. And then we had, of course, a discussion on South King Fire and Rescue, and that was on our consent agenda. So I was really pleased with that and that it passed. Other one was the Des Moines Arts Commission. I'm going to say, you know, Human Services has three people on their team. Arts Commission has three people and unfortunately, one has just resigned. So now there's two. And that committee has done an extraordinary amount of work. Look at the virtual you know, music that we've had, the virtual, the virtual concerts has been, have been wonderful. Squidorama is going to be for, done on the, I believe, 14th of November. That's all virtual. That's going to be live streaming on the Mast Facebook. So they've done a lot of collaborating and, and a lot of work with others to get this done and get our programs, you know, hopefully continuing and that we don't fall to the wayside. We had a great presentation by Southside Regional Tourism Authority, which was good, by Megan McGuire. The next, of course, going over the budget and then current program updates and new business. And I think the most important thing, and I just don't know how this works or how we get it, but I know Nicole and Katie and Ashley are going to do a really good job because they've put out a really good application for those people that are interested to apply. We really need more people on all of our committees that are really run by our community members. And, you know, many of these are dear to our hearts, but boy, we sure need people to step up. And I know it's tough during COVID, but what a better time, right? For people to volunteer in their own city and help out where they can. Because a lot of people are working from home. Some have lost their jobs, which is my God, you know, heart-wrenching. But getting out and helping and volunteering would be extremely helpful for all of us, really. Community members, our committees, as well as for individuals who do that volunteering. And that concludes my report.
Councilmember Banks, before I jump to the next person, it's really not getting out and volunteering as much these days. It's connecting via Zoom. So people should know that it's, it's a safe way to become part of the engine that with the Art Commission that provides a number of events and, and helps bring the community together. And once we get out of the world of COVID and hopefully vaccines and so forth are in place and people are feeling healthy and safe again to go out in the community. They are responsible for what they do, our outdoor art gallery with all of the visual art in the city. They do the they do the concerts in the park and Shakespeare in the park and they coordinate with a number of people. And that committee can hold, I, I think it's been eight people, eight, eight members at times, has it not?
Well, nine. And we've been, we've been down to, let's see, nine, then we went to six. And now it's, it was three and now it's two. And as liaison, and they're doing a really tremendous job. As a matter of fact, we're going to have a presentation in December by Nick Fannin. So I wanted to make sure we, we understood that. And, you know, it's we have another gentleman, Eduardo, who is just fabulous because he's the one that helped put together that virtual concert series with Ashley and Katie and Nicole. And I'm telling you, you know, two people, three people have done a lot. And you're right, Mayor. I appreciate the fact that you're noting that it's a Zoom, right? All of our meetings are Zoom. Life is Zoom, I guess, but it certainly would be very helpful if people stepped up. You know, one or two or three extras per committee if, if the other committee needs them. But I know for sure the Arts Commission does. So, and it's dear to my heart as well. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I believe actually all of our committees have some room as to, I know the Farmer's Market Board has some room and so forth. And so I would say that yes, volunteerism right now is, is down a little bit. These are difficult times. But I want to make sure that we make the point that if there is something that you're interested in or if you're just interested in trying to get involved in your community, reach out to the city. We have opportunities on our website. You can call the city clerk's office and she will direct you in the right way. And, you know, or talk to any of your council members. They can tell you what the committees are that we, that we have, that people volunteer on. And we would be helped, you know, very willing to help you connect. So thanks for bringing that up. I think it's an important point that we have to bring up quite often because I, I will say the volunteers that we have had in the city, both past and present have been nothing short of amazing. We have events that are spectacular and they're all done out of the goodness of people's hearts. Nicole, I noticed you turned your camera on. Did you want to make a comment here?
No, I just was on now to, if anyone needed to ask me anything.
Thank you for being. Deputy Mayor Mahoney, shifting to you.
You, Mayor. Um, first thing, obviously I attended several things with several of my colleagues and so forth. But I did attend the mayor's call to the governor on Tuesday. And it, it's something very serious right now is the rapid rise of COVID cases in our community. And we're coming into the Thanksgiving. I can just only implore our residents to be cautious. You're going to have to think twice about your Thanksgiving dinner. I know why this meeting was going on. The governor actually was giving a speech to our, our residents in the state. We have to be cautious. Wear your mask, social distance, and think about where you are and what situations you want to be put in. We really need to put a stop to this rate and curb it. And it's to each and every one of us. Recently, many of our community have come down with COVID. It's starting to hit home. It's a real thing. It's not a hoax. So please adhere to the guidelines the Public Health Department is, is sending out. It's important. On a better point, this last Wednesday, I stopped by the Activity Center as they were giving out the Eats program. And City Manager Michael Mathias, I just want to tell you and your staff how much these seniors and veterans really appreciated this program. It's a shame that it was almost canceled and the fact that you've been finding ways to fund it is a real great contribution to these people in need. The other amazing thing was I got to see quite a few veterans and thank them for their service and they really rely on this as well. The B and E meet gift card on this particular event was really well-received. So I just want you to know that I heard many times to tell you thank you. So I promise to pass that on. And finally, I just want to address your comments, Councilmember Harris. You're trying to be the victim and you're not the victim. You are the problem. Candidly, and we called it out many times, you continue to work on your own. A recent examples when you were meeting with Congressman Larson without any designation, and it continues on and on and on. And it's got to stop. If you're not going to work with this council and go rogue, you will be a problem. Second, quite honestly, a lot of the resistance is because you frankly are rude to staff, fellow council members. And it's evident in the blog and even tonight's meeting, right? So you've got to change that if you want to do anything or get anything done, because you have to work with the seven. It's the seven, not the one. And, and finally, I've seen your request. You're not reasonable in your request. They're, they're random tangents. They're not pertinent to the subjects at hand. It's confusing what you want. Yes, we can inquire, but it's got to be with reason. Thank you, Mayor. That's my comments.
Okay. Couple of things to, to cover tonight. One, it was, comment was made a little earlier about some people not understanding how our government operates. And having been elected for a number of years, I can say I, I get how confusing it can be. The city a while back and these did what we call a series of videos called Government 101. And they, I believe, are still on our website. They're a little dated, but the essential functions are there. I know that some of the department heads have changed. And they may want to, in the future, as opportunities allow, they might want to update their video. But right now our focus is on the health and safety of the city. So that's probably not something that is going to happen in the very near future. But nonetheless, all of our department heads, I wa, I can't remember, was it four years ago? Three or five? I don't know. About five years ago, give or take, went through and they talked about their department, what it did and how it did its work. And that's still out there on our website for the folks, for folks who are curious to, to go and see. Tonight, we did have an environment meeting. The focus of the meeting was the, was entitled our Surface Water Management Comprehensive Plan Update. Essentially, the Surface Water Management is an enterprise fund and they're responsible for what their name suggests. But they, we've had, you know, the managing surface water, you've got emergency projects, you've got planned projects, and you have to budget it. And because it is an enterprise fund, it has to earn, it has to generate the revenues and meet its expenditures on its own. And the staff has been paying attention to it. And the current collections and the current projects don't look like they're going to align in quite the way we want to with the reserves that we feel are necessary to have for emergencies. Now, this just means there may be shortfalls. That's what they're bringing to our attention. The staff has said they're going to monitor the situation. It, it's impacted by a number of things. And one specifically is when something happens, people bid. And so if, depending upon the economy at the time, sometimes those, the same job is more expensive at one time and less expensive at another. So the staff's going to monitor that situation. They're being very mindful of, of our rates as, and, and our project schedule. But these are, these are projects that, what, from what I understand, that's on the docket. These are not really optional projects. They are required for us, for our environmental permits. So at this point, I guess, just to summarize, the staff is going to monitor it. They're going to get back to the committee around the beginning of second quarter next year when we have a better idea of where things are going. But I guess that's as much as I'll say on that at this time. Last, yes, last night, I was also with, see, I'm sorry. Deputy Mayor Mahoney, we provided a state of the city for the, as invited to the Des Moines Marina Association. And essentially, we have done this as requested for quite some time. COVID makes it a bit of a, a challenge. But the Des Moines Marina Association did go to the extent of setting up a Zoom session and so forth. And then they invited us in. It's a real pleasure to meet with members of the community and walk them through a variety of, of things that they have questions about. As we drive around the city, people see the theater and they, they see the landmark and they, they wonder, you know, what's happening at the marina and, and things like that. And we're there to answer any question as best we can or at least provide them with the information. Oftentimes, we do have other council members that join in and we have staff members that join in and will cover or, or expand upon some of the information that we, that we provide. We did have Councilmember Buxton join in last night and help us with our slide over Human Services. And so I appreciate that. But it seemed to go very well. Received a number of comments. And again, that offer goes out to any homeowners association condominium group. It, it goes out. We, we, we've done it for years and we're just finding another way to start, start this up. And I would be remiss if I didn't point out that this Friday is Friday the 13th. It's a very special day. And the reason it's such a special day is I believe Councilmember Banks is having a birthday. So I just wanted to not let it go by and wish Councilmember Banks a very happy birthday. Because of the delay in Zoom, I, I really don't want to torture you with us all trying to say, sing you happy birthday. But anyway. But anyway, I didn't want to let that go by. And then to conclude my comments tonight, you know, if you drive by my home, our holiday lights are up and they're on. And it's always been a steadfast rule of mine that you put them up before Thanksgiving and you don't turn them on until the day after. However, under COVID, it's, life is very different. We, as, as Deputy Mayor Mahoney pointed out, we have to really rethink what Thanksgiving and what the holidays are going to look like in the gatherings. And unless you're using, unless you're sending around pictures of your humorous Christmas sweater or something like that, it might sit in the closet for another year, and that's just a shame. But since we can't do a lot of the things that we want to do, what we can do, if the mood strikes you, is we can decorate the outsides of our home and we can start celebrating early. So when people can get together in a vehicle and drive around, they can see that this community still has a lot of spirit. And we want to, you know, we want to see smiles on people's faces. So if they drive down the street and they see a house lit, well, bring a little joy to your neighbors. That's all I'm going to say about that. So anyway, something to think about, folks. And with that, I will note that we are at the end of our meeting tonight. Our next meeting is December third, and I am looking for a motion to adjourn. And I see Councilmember Banks.
I move to adjourn our meeting until December the third, and I want to thank everyone for a happy birthday. And I think that you're right. We should certainly decorate because my God, we need something to be happy about.
Absolutely.
Light it up, Des Moines. Light it up.
Light it up. And I think I saw a second to that motion by Councilmember Nutting. So all those in favor, please raise your hand until I call your name. Councilmember Harris, myself, Deputy Mayor Mahoney, Councilmember Buxton, Councilmember Banks, and Councilmember Nutting. Everybody have a wonderful Thanksgiving, and we will see you again on December third. We are adjourned.